Good afternoon, we're back on the record. Board of Standards and Appeals, April 28th public hearing, April 20th, 2015 public hearing. Zoning calendar, new cases, item number one, 237-14BZ, 16201 Jamaica Avenue, Queens. And my microphone is not on. 237-14BZ.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeffrey Chester for the applicant. We had someone at the review session yesterday, and I know there were a number of issues that were raised, so let me try to go through some of them. One of the first issues had to do with the installation of the sprinkler system, testing and sign-off, so we're going to have to give you a revised submission with that documentation. Concerning the parking, and I wasn't here, and this is just notes that relate to me, but it's my understanding that we qualify for a waiver of parking, but I don't know if that was the issue, or the board just wanted some sense of the modal split of our patrons. I'm not quite sure what was...
There wasn't any discussion at all in the statement of facts about how people arrive? So, I mean, if it's a, you have a lot of patrons, right? So if there's that many people, how are they getting there? Where do they park if they have to get there by car?
Right.
Even if there's a waiver, it's, there's an impact, right?
Right, right. We will add that to the statement of facts. This is in downtown Jamaica in the central business district. It's one of the better-served areas for transit in the city, but I'll discuss that in the revised statement of facts.
It's not that there's a waiver, you're in a C6 district, there's no parking requirement for category B. So, but it doesn't mean that you don't have a parking need because of your patron. So that's what you need to talk about.
Regarding the certificate of occupancy, I don't have a good answer for you. That certificate of occupancy was what was attached to, if you go to the biz and you go under that block and lot, that is what's showing. It doesn't make any sense to me either. Clearly, there's a building on the site showing a parking. That building is not a new building either, just judging from eyeing it, it's 40 years or older.
Can you go to DOB and see if it's, you know, on record there?
Yes, we will. We're going to do some research at DOB and try to determine what's going on with that.
And then also, the 15 open violations, and four of them were for zoning, but you can't really tell from the biz site what the zoning question is.
That's a nice phone.
So, I might, you know, my initial reaction was that, well, maybe they're ineligible for CFO. What's the issue?
It could have implications on the CFO, which they may not have been able to get one.
We'll have to go back and revisit that. So the next, unless there are more questions on that, the next issue had to do with ADA access and elevator. There is in fact an elevator. There's an entrance on Jamaica Avenue, and patrons walk upstairs to access the gym, but there's also a separate entrance on 162nd Street. There's a vestibule there, and there's an elevator there that goes to the back of the club.
So, I guess that question is, I misunderstood. I thought it, because there's only a part plan shown, so you can't tell where, to show where the elevator is?
I think the elevator is indicated on the plan.
Sorry?
I thought the elevator was indicated on the plan.
Yeah, to the rear.
It's at the rear of the club space, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't understand how, you know, if I'm handicapped and I get there, you know, how does anybody know I'm there? Is the door open? Is there a sign that says Lucille Roberts? You know, how do you use that entrance, if you could find out first?
I will.
Right. I mean, because, you know, the other thing is, it's DOB's call about whether they consider that an equivalent entry, right? It's supposed to be at the main entry, not you're disabled and then they send you around a block to the, effectively, the service entrance.
Yeah, I'm just not sure that the building configuration would allow for an elevator on that front space on Jamaica Avenue.
Right, but that's a DOB call about whether you have to install it, and whether you're meeting the standard, the ADA standard, because that's what this is all about, right? Is it considered an accessible route, right, from that point to this facility?
Right. I understand that. Our architect seems to think it is.
So, we need DOB to agree.
So how, would that come after, wouldn't that come after the fact in the typical course of affairs, or...
No, because of legalization, so nothing comes after the fact. What should have come before the fact was permission, and then, right? So as legalization, you need to show us that this is an acceptable approach, just like with the sprinklers and the fire alarm and all that, that they're properly installed.
So, would it be adequate if we had permits for that elevator? I'm not quite sure what documentation...
No, because since you never got to see it, you never filed plans for this, right?
No, plans were filed.
They were filed but not approved because it's, right? Were they reviewed for ADA access?
I would have to speak to the architect about that.
Right, so I doubt they were, right?
Might not have been.
Yeah. So, it's a specific question, does this meet ADA requirements?
And we can get that discreet review at the Buildings Department?
Yeah, you could, for instance, you could probably, I'm just thinking, you could file that as a request, or, I'm not sure exactly how that would work, if it's a CCD1?
Maybe.
Yeah.
Because we just want to understand whether or not that elevator access is permissible or permitted, because I'm looking at the plans now, and all I see is the elevator, but I don't necessarily, I don't really have anything that tells me the route from the, you know, from the street to the elevator to the...
Right. I don't think the ground floor plan indicates the elevator. You see it on the floor plan?
No, it does. That's what I was talking about. There's a part plan, showing the elevator, but I don't know where it is to the streets.
Where is it in space?
Well, I can tell you, but we can designate it better. It's at the back of the building on 162nd Street, near where it meets the adjacent building.
So what's happening is, you're disabled, and the main front door that has the awning, if I've got that right, is on Jamaica Avenue, where everyone else comes up a stair and goes to the reception. And a disabled person, the least able to handle this, is forced to walk around the corner, what's the width? It's like a 200, I don't know, is it 200 feet? It's long, right?
Well...
Walk all the way around the corner to this remote place to get on an elevator. That's not normally considered a principal entrance.
I don't know if I would, in all due respect, agree with the chair's characterization of remote. It might even be easier, depending on how they were, how said disabled person was going to be delivered, to be on 162nd Street. Jamaica Avenue is an extraordinarily busy thoroughfare for pedestrian traffic, and it might, it might be easier, in fact, to have access on 162nd Street, and it's not very far from the corner.
So, yes, it is. It's as far from the corner as you can get. It's 150 feet from the corner. So, but by the way, this isn't really our call. This is DOB's call about what they consider an accessible route, right, or accessible entrance.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about, okay.
And did you go to the community board?
We did. We did go to the community board. We went with the Land Use Committee, we met with the full board. We requested copies of the resolution on multiple occasions. As a matter of fact, they just came in today.
And they approved it?
They did approve it.
Okay. And you'll submit that?
We will.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I think that, was it right? Let me go over the questions. Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so...
The fire department stuff?
Sorry?
You wanted the fire department?
Oh, the fire department, yes, of course.
The proofing and all that stuff?
Well, but they don't have, they asked for, they already reviewed it, and they said they need confirmation that the alarm system is functional and has been tested and approved by DOB and Fire Department. So, that's what we need. So, okay. So, I don't know, this is going to take a while?
Yeah.
So how much time?
You know, being conservative, at least a month, I would like to have maybe six weeks.
Six weeks is probably more realistic, yeah. So, if you submit it on the 11th of June for a hearing on the 23rd of June?
11th and 23rd, okay.
Any speakers?
Thank you.
Item number two, 284-14BZ, 267 Pacific Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I'm here on behalf of the bar method, which is equivalent to a ballet studio, no noise, thankfully. I apologize, the applicant opened the space after I'd filed, and it slipped through my fingers to update. I have fire and sprinkler sign-offs from the new building. I will submit it as part of my application, and I will note the application number on the plans as well, and I'll update the statement of facts and the plans to note the existing conditions, and that they'll remain in place.
Okay. Great. So, are there any speakers on this? So this one, I think if you submit, we can close this?
I'm done on my end, and my architect will have it for me by tomorrow morning, so I could submit by Friday, if we can get on the May 19th for a decision.
Yeah, that's fine.
And this is the side of the famous one-way mural?
Oh.
What?
The one-way mural on the side of the building?
Is it?
I believe so, yeah.
If it's going to cause me problems, no.
No.
Just be careful, it may not be there much longer. It's a sham. Okay, so, we could have a, let's see, submission, when did you say you could submit in a week?
I could submit by Friday.
By Friday? Oh, that's terrific. So then you could submit by the first for a decision on the 12th? Is that good?
Yeah. If it works for you, it works for me.
Okay, so, we could close this, I think. So for a motion to close?
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you, Brown.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Item number three, 1-15BZ, 150 West 85th Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Fred Riquet Becker for the applicant, Manhattan Country School. We attended your executive, I attended your executive session yesterday, and have responses to a large amount of what you requested, and will submit addition, I have some questions, and will submit additional material, obviously, in writing. Just so you know, I have with me Michelle Solah, who is the director of the school, and I have as well Andrew Bartle and Joanne Grady, who are the project architects, should there be questions that I cannot respond to, or that you would like to hear directly from them. As the board is aware, this is a relocation of an existing school on the east side, the Manhattan Country School, 50-year-old school with K, pre-K through 8, which is moving to the former Manus School building on 150 West 85th Street, and as part of the move, it is going to be, over a period of time, as set forth in our papers, doubling in size from one grade, class per grade, to two classes per grade, 200 to 400 students, and that is a significant part of our programmatic needs and our need for space at this location. I'm going to go directly, since you've read the papers, I'm going to go directly into the questions that were raised at yesterday's hearing. I know there was a request for more information on the A finding, particularly, this current building is obsolete because it is built, it is currently occupied as a music school for adult students, for college-level students for the most part. They operate seven days a week, five days a week are primarily the college students, and on the weekends, they have younger students coming in for music classes and such. The building is shown on our existing plans, is two floors of large open space for performances. There's a very large library on one of the upper floors. You then have one floor, which is almost entirely a rabbit warren of music practice rooms, which are as small as 60 square feet, and their classrooms are also, on the upper floors, rather small, approximately 200 square feet per classroom, which at a 20 square foot per student is only 10 students, and we have approximately 20 students per class. So it is a very functionally obsolete building for any use other than the music school. Manus is leaving because they've become part of the new school. The new school is building a large facility downtown, and they will incorporate this building into their, this college into their building, and they sold off the building. There was a question of the existing school curriculum, is that the Manus School curriculum?
No, no, no.
Or the, the MJS?
Yeah, in other words, they're moving for a reason.
Yeah, right, okay. I just wasn't sure, I understand that. I just wasn't sure which existed, fine. And as is stated, what is, what we're doing is, we are primarily going from one class to two classes per student. We are transferring a large number of the specialized classrooms, the art, the music, the art, the science, woodshop, classes along those lines. Currently, those are rather small spaces. We are in a historic townhouse, the Ogden Codman Mansion on East 96th Street, so it's a, basically, it's a gerrymandering and a shoehorning in of a school into a private residence. So we will explain as we have, and we'll go through it again, what we have in terms of sizes. We have approximately 18,000 square feet of space now, we're going to approximately 40,000 square feet, and this will accommodate the flex spaces and the communal space. We don't have large communal spaces now, and that will be part of it. We will back up the citations and the references, this was a question raised also by Commissioner Otley Brown, in terms of, some of them are guidelines, some of them are school SCA guidelines in terms of number of square feet per student, what is a reasonable science lab, art room, et cetera. Not everything is, you know, is black letter, but we will provide the substantiation for that information for you. The building does have a certificate of occupancy, so the non-compliance is, in terms of their height and the setback, are all legal at this point in time. We'll, if we haven't given you the most recent, which I think we did, I'll just confirm that we have the most recent certificate of occupancy for you. I will correct my...
Well, but the certificate of occupancy doesn't prove the shape of the building, right? Just something to show that, or to establish that these are existing legal non-compliancees. Could be a Sanborn map, could be an existing, some existing drawings that predate the change in zoning, maybe it's probably a pre-61 building.
The building was built in 1928, so, yes.
Right, okay, so, just something, I'm sure the architect has some drawings that...
Okay. We'll take a look at that. I'll correct the EAS to remove the office reference, sorry about that. Too many little boxes, and my eyes aren't what they used to be.
Yeah, boxes, they throw people off so much.
And my eyes aren't what they used to be. The DOT site safety plan, we have a bit of a chicken and an egg situation here. We have reached out to DOT, they're saying, "Come back to us when you've approved." You want us to do it ahead of time, so, but they've...
No, it just will make it a condition in the resolution.
That'll be fine, okay. The, I know there was, the chair raised a question about the flex space, which is part of that. That space can actually accommodate anywhere from 20 to 40 students, depending on the activity, whether it's lunch, whether it's individual or group activities, whether it's, I won't say lectures, but communal activities. Our average classroom will have 20 students per class, not 26, so it's not necessarily a one-on-one moving from one class to the other. There'll be other ongoing activities and some mixing and matching, if you will.
That little flex place can accommodate 40 students? Really?
Cafeteria.
As, it can be done if they're sitting and eating in their laps, yes.
Okay, well, we'll have them speak more, we'll have them speak more about the flex space, okay.
Yes, make it up. We will go into the issue of room size and split grades. I know there's, I think perhaps the director can speak to the issue better than I can in terms of your question on that. We're finding out the height of the Brandeis School for you. It's, we're not quite sure, the SCA guideline says 14 feet per floor, and it's a four-floor building, so it would be up to 60 feet, but we're, we'll get you that information.
But you don't have something from the CFO, or...
We're going to, we'll get it for you.
One of those databases should tell you the height.
We'll get it for you, that I promise. The cellar excavation, we did have, under the previous architect and with Robert Silman Associates, they looked at the excavation of the cellar space. They did not do boring, so this existing building, it is believed to be on Manhattan Schist, the...
That's based on some kind of topographical data?
I'll find it out for you.
It could be a prior boring with, you know, on fire with the Department of Buildings or something.
We'll take a look. The issue, though, however, is that the cellar space is currently only 10 feet 9 inches, so it's not a very usable space. There is discussion from Robert Silman and in the prior architect's report, that if they were to excavate, they'd have to redo the entire first-floor slab, they would be underpinning of our building, potentially underpinning of the adjacent six-story apartment building, and even if we were to excavate, I'm not quite sure what we would gain, because we would have subcellar space, which is not good for the art program or for the science lab, and certainly, one of our major issues, and I will go through that, is the light and air, which we're trying to provide to the students, and this would all be subterranean space, and we don't have a lot of extraneous space we're using for non-essential programs or storage or things along those lines. But we will, we'll give you some more information on that.
Yes, good.
I will back it up. Going into Commissioner Hinkson's questions, the as-of-right, the building is almost built full on the lot, it's a 90-foot-deep building, and what happens is, we have a lot of spaces that would have no light and air, and then we have interior spaces, we mentioned it, we'll go through it again. We have lotline windows on the west, which would not be legal for light and air, and the whole purpose of the courtyard is to have glass, a glass courtyard effectively, that will open into glass-enclosed classrooms to provide light and air, which is essential, and we'll provide some documentation for younger students.
It was a little hard to, oh, just for me, I didn't understand whether you were talking about that those, the courtyard, and I guess you've also got some skylights in a couple of the classrooms, was going to eradicate the 10% of classrooms that didn't have legal light and air. It wasn't clear whether you were actually fixing that in your scheme, or whether you were conceding that you couldn't fix it, because the, sort of the hatching that was used, it appears in both the as-of-right and in the proposed as sort of the same thing, and I was just wondering, well, are you, you know, able to fix this situation, or are you saying, "We can't," and you're doing something else, so?
No. The architect can speak to that, but I believe the answer is yes. Putting this interior courtyard will fix that situation and make it a desirable, effective operating building with corridors and space that will allow light and air into these spaces to make them viable for younger students.
Maybe you could just make, I don't know how you want to do that, but make it clearer in, both in the graphic and in writing.
They're listening to you very carefully, yes.
I think the issue is that the, the interior rooms rely on lotline windows.
Right.
So that, that needs to be made clearer in the analysis, and that by providing the court, you don't have to rely on the lotline windows, even though you have lotline windows, you can be okay if something was built next to it.
Right, and even those lotline windows are rather small. They're not large picture windows, they're small windows.
Well, you could open them, right?
Well, it, opening lotline windows adjacent to a residential building is not good for the children, and it's not good for the neighbors. We'd rather not do that on both ends. It's a potential transmission of noise, and certainly, there are privacy issues on both sides. But again, it wouldn't be illegal light, and it's not a legal situation in the event something was ever built in that location. Going for it to Commissioner Otley Brown, the 1,200 or so students that do, are listed as registered with the Manhattan Countries, I'm sorry, with Manus School, are on a flex schedule that goes seven days a week. There are, you know, classes from 7:45 in the morning until basically 10 o'clock at night, so it's not that there are 1,000 on campus at one point, let's say, but they are spread out over the days. College, I mean, at least in my days, you know, I had classes three days a week sometimes, if I made my schedule correctly, or they're coming in only in the evenings, or they're coming in only in the mornings, and again, there are a couple of hundred children who come on the weekends, so that's why it's, you know, it works for them, but it doesn't accommodate the 400, and it's also brought out, these are adults who have a very different form of study than children in terms of space, in terms of needs, in terms of taking notes at a desk, as opposed to having a real desk, who don't need the light and air, I mean, at least...
Well, for yourself.
Well, but you know, colleges are treated like mushrooms. They just study in the dark, and you know, we've all been in lecture halls when we were in college and such, that, you know, we're below ground. So, that is that we will...
I mean, I think part of it is, it's a school, so there's performance spaces, so you might have an orchestra with 150 or 300 performers, where that doesn't do you any good for an elementary school. So you should distinguish it's quite specifically in terms of, I'm sure you can imagine what's in there, or a little help from others.
We have a call-in to one of the people at Manus to get a better understanding of how the school operates for you. We did have something, there's something in our Fleury chart about the recapture of the space taken out of the courtyard, but I will go through that again, so it's a little clearer that we've taken out a certain amount of space, and we are adding more than we removed. We're, we took, but we, some of the space that we're placing back in the building is within the existing envelope with some of the mezzanines, and then there's a certain amount that is being put on the roof. I will give great, better detail on that for you. The food refuse in the cellar is not refrigerated, it's ventilated, you can, the architect can address that issue better, and as to the composting, since this is a very ecological school with a farm upstate, they remove the composting, or the compostable, if you will, materials on a daily basis. They're taken off, so nothing, you don't have compost bins sitting in the hallways.
And it's moved to where?
It's, you can't answer that, you can't answer that. I speak.
You can later, you ask her.
Yes, but some of it goes to the roof for our garden, and some of it goes off-site, and we do have the farm, and it goes elsewhere, but it is removed, so it's not, it's not, it's not percolating within the building, is the answer. And that's also, what I mentioned earlier, Commissioner Charlie Brown, the, we're going to go through some of the criteria, the guidelines, whether they're official, or whether they're suggested by the school construction authority and other, the DOB.
And you'll provide the actual sheets from these sources?
We do have those. It was, it was taken and removed, if you will, so we will, we will put them back. Going on to Commissioner Montanez, thank you for your comments on the design, the architects appreciate that. The HVAC unit is, was reduced, as in papers, it from, was reduced by half, and it is not visible from the street. Given that it's set, where it's set back from, and given its height, you cannot view it from the street at all. Part of, it should also be noted, we did mention, I think in papers, that the, one of the functions of the interior courtyard is to ventilate the building, and that will reduce our energy costs, our energy needs by approximately 50%. We were originally looking at around 100 tons of AC units, and now we're down to the 50, 60 range. So that's, that, what that did was it made for smaller units, less visible units. We had a unit that was almost 40 feet by 18 feet, now we're around 20 feet by 12 feet, so it's good in that regard. The play area on the rear of the roof is going to be a mesh enclosed, it's basically a chain link with rubber, a rubberized chain link. We'll give you a better rendering and a better explanation. So basically, it's not a building, it's what you, these cages that one often sees on the roofs, it allows for light, it allows for air, and that's the nature of what it will be. It's not an enclosed building in any shape or form.
Right, it looks very bulky.
It's big, relatively speaking, it has a height and a width and a length.
But that would be visible from the street?
No, it's not, it's, it's in the rear.
No, but I mean, from the opposite street.
Well, it's visible from the opposite street only to the reason that we are adjacent to a playground behind us, so anything that, it is a one-story building partially behind us, and the rest of it is the tennis courts and the playground for the Brandeis School, so it is, if we put a six-foot shed, you'd see it from the other street, but again, it's something that is, we can give you a rendering, or we can give you some sort of sample that would show you that it effectively fades into the sky, and you won't see very much of it. And again, it's also set back 110 feet from the curb of West 84th Street.
Just a quick question about that. It's 13 feet 10 inches, the mesh play structure, is that from the roof or from the top of the parapet, so that it would actually be taller than that if the parapet was hiding it?
Again, we should ask the architect, so...
It's going to be from the parapet.
From the parapet, okay.
So it would be approximately...
So it's 13 feet 10 above the parapet?
Parapet, so approximately 16 feet 10.
So it's a 16-foot-high space. But these, but the enclosures are based on activities on the roof and ball games and so on. There's like a standard that says how, so if we could just have the standard?
I will.
And yes, also, the material, that would make it a lot easier to understand, the opacity.
Yes, absolutely, and I will give a rendering. The other two issues that I can address at this point, yes, there, we had some discrepancy with the mailings, half of them, a large portion went out appropriately on the day Half of them, a large portion went out appropriately on the day that they were supposed to go out. There was a small amount that went out a day later. We would, we would re-notify for the next hearing, or whatever is, whatever's going to happen next year, with a notice that it will be 10 o'clock in the morning. So we'll, but we know that it was, they were both sent certified, and they were sent within two days of each other, and most, most of it has not come back to us. Okay, that's it. The last item that I want to address, just for the record, is, one of our objections from the Department of Buildings is for the horizontal enlargement of the exterior stair in the rear yard on the fourth. We now have an exterior stair that goes from the first floor to the roof. It's a metal exterior stair, which is legal. But we, because of the interior outline, or, not the outline, the interior configuration, we need to shift it for safety purposes, we need to shift the corridor over, so we need to do a horizontal enlargement of the stair on the fourth, fifth, and sixth floors. One of them is a permitted obstruction objection. We have filed a CCD-1 with our superintendent, Reb Holtz. We're trying to push that through. I've been in touch with Felicia Miller as well, the Department of Buildings, and anything that the board can do to push them along would be much appreciated.
I'm not sure if I, so you came here originally with the idea of an extension of that stair?
No, it was not, it was not, it wasn't, it wasn't on the original plans.
Oh, I see, so.
What happened was subsequent to an examination of the plans, we would have had to have basically done a safety car that would have run through a classroom around the side, the westerly, easterly side of the building. So now it's running between two classrooms. It's a safer means of egress, it's a more direct means of egress, it doesn't interfere with the classrooms on the fourth, fifth, and sixth floors. Because the egress is over to the right.
And when did you file the request for that?
That was filed approximately two weeks ago. And there, I mean, originally, we were told that it would get an expedited review, and now we're being told that it will take a month to two months in the normal course of business, so.
Wait, I'm confused. So the one that was submitted on April 2nd says the exterior stair is not permitted obstruction in the required rear yard.
That is correct.
So how is this different? This is an enclosure?
No, 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 no. We didn't have, the original plans that were filed, when we filed back in January, did not have this extension.
Is the extension different than the exterior stair?
The extension is an extension of the exterior stair that did not exist in the, you can ask the architect.
Yeah, yeah, let's clarify that.
When we did the original plan, it wasn't the, there was no extension of the stair, I believe.
Okay. Let's clarify that with the architect, because there's an objection that says exterior stair is not permitted obstruction in the rear yard.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, because we, we're enlarging the obstruction.
So, okay.
In other words.
So you're concerned that the plan that was filed is a different plan than they reviewed?
No, no. What happened, if you look at page, let me get to the proper page for you. It's the rear elevation. If you look at page P402.
Not there yet. Is anyone else there? On the proposed conditions? Yeah, I've got it, I've got it.
Okay. So if you look to the right, you see a stair that goes all the way up to the roof, and then it angles down to the left, to the second floor effectively. There is a dark line that goes straight up the building. Yes? Everything to the right of that existed, and that was an existing, a pre-existing, non-complying condition.
Right.
We have now, we are now proposing that on the fourth, fifth, and sixth floors, you have what is on the left side, where it says exterior egress stair extensions at floors four, five, and six. That is what is triggering the objection at this point in time.
Right. And you're saying you need an, you have the objection, you have it.
We have the objection, yes. And it's filed with you, correct. You have the objection as part of your papers.
Right, it's also was filed with DOB, because it's an objection.
Right, and they've also raised a building, they've raised a building code objection on it.
Oh, there's a building code objection?
I'm sorry, there's a building.
What's the building code objection?
It's building code that it's not permitted, it's 27-376. There are six criteria. The one criteria we do not meet is that it's within 10 feet of a rear lotline, and that we only have an 11-foot rear lotline.
Okay. The link of objection.
Yeah, so it's a new objection.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so it's a new objection from the time that we originally filed, and because, however, as we set forth on our papers with the DOB, our rear lotline backs up primarily to the open schoolyard. So we're not creating anything worse than exists, and there's easy access to this, and every other criteria in terms of coverings and materials and fire safety will be complied with.
So you don't know how DOB is going to respond to this?
No, we don't.
Okay.
We are hoping for the best.
Yeah, we are too, because otherwise, I don't want to.
Just to clarify, you're seeking a building code variance, you're not seeking an interpretative. You haven't asked for them to reconsider it as, as an objection, you've said.
We've asked them for a waiver.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so we're hoping DOB takes care of this.
Right, we're asking for a CCD-1 recon request to waive the, to waive this objection, yes.
So the help that you want from us is to call DOB and say, "Could you push this along? We have this application."
That's all, that's all that we're asking for. We're not asking that you argue our case, we're just asking, give a little, give a little nudge, please. You have more moxie than we do.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
I think.
Any other questions for?
Yes.
The community board land use.
Yes.
Did they approve this?
It went, we, I ended up with a 35-10 vote. The, we ultimately did get the majority approval on this, yes. The community, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at their resolution, and it says, that the land use committee says the required findings ACDE have not been met. And then they go through the individual votes to show that they approved it. So I don't understand.
Because they didn't have all the materials submitted.
Oh, was that it?
No, what it was is, we went back to them twice. The only issue that was of serious concern to them was the issue of the visibility of the rooftop enlargement on, at the seventh floor. When we went back to, for the full vote, the full community board vote on the 7th of April, they voted the 35-10, more or less, to approve, and then there was a, we had not, because of certain issues on our part, we had not yet been able to finalize whether or not we could push the building back any further. We then submitted a response to the land use committee, saying, due to the trust situation, due to the size, due to various other issues, was a three-page submission, we couldn't, if we pushed, we couldn't push it back, it would, the room is only approximately 14 feet deep, we just couldn't move it, and if we moved it, it would get higher, et cetera, and we could not make it invisible. At that point, the community board, the land use committee voted 4 to 3 to support the application. And that, so it was approved, pending, what could we do to the roof? And then once we explained what we could or could not do to that rooftop addition, then they voted 4 to 3 of the land use committee to support us.
But you haven't had a follow-up full board meeting?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know that they're going to do a full, a follow-up full board meeting at this point. We had, we had original, an original meeting, we postponed for a second hearing at their request. We submitted all new materials, we lowered the roof, we changed the mechanicals, we changed the exterior treatment of the rooftop, we did other some things, and we got more support in that regard.
Well, they say they're going to present it to the full board on May 5. Okay.
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 That's, but that was.
But then, the land use committee did approve it.
Yes, they, 4 to 3. And the issue is whether we could move it back further, and the answer is, we couldn't move it back further. I mean, we, we had a three-page response that looked at every, we had Robert Silman Associates talk about the structure, it's a supported trust structure, and, again, we don't have a very large room, the trust would have been in the middle of the room and made it not a viable room any longer. And we also are constrained by the distance between the rear wall of the addition and the courtyard as well, and safe access on the roof level for the children.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so if we could speak to Mr. Bartle and maybe the school administrator?
Who would you like first?
I guess, architect.
Andrew or Joanne?
Uh, Joanne, give us a please.
Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Joanne Graney.
Hi.
Hi.
So did you want to introduce something, or did you want to respond to some questions?
I can, I can go through some of the questions that I heard as we were sitting there, that we were so eager to respond to. So the first thing was, that came up was the flex space, which is a space that the school plans to use for a couple of different things. We mentioned lunch, so the school is looking into, currently, the school, all the children eat in their classrooms. In this new space there, they'd like to sort of branch out a little bit and have some of the children eat in other sort of parts of the school, so there can be more of a social component to that. And the flex space is one of the spaces that has been identified as a potential location for that. There will be two pull-down cafeteria tables, which can each seat 40 people, or, sorry, 20 people, 20 students. So that's how we get to sort of a maximum kind of lunchtime capacity of 40. Alternately, that space, I don't know if you noticed on the plans, there's sort of an operable partition adjacent to the music room. So there will be occasions where they have small musical performances, they'll open up that partition, there will be some parents and students seated in the flex space and to work together with the music space to then offer some audience seating area.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. Going into the, the light and air, as we showed it on our drawings, we'll clarify some of the, the way that we represented that, but the bottom line is that it doesn't solve all situations where we have a deficiency in those two things, but it does make big improvements for many of the rooms. There are still some rooms on the corner where we're really limited to the lotline windows, and the existing windows are small in proportion, where we don't meet that criteria. But because of the, the depth of the building, the 90-foot depth, and the fact that the floor-to-floor ceiling height is often quite low, about eight, eight to nine feet, it, the interior spaces become very dark. So putting the courtyard in the middle really helps open up those classrooms and also the corridors, which, which also kind of let the school breathe a little bit.
So maybe just, yeah, on the plan, is it, you use the same sort of hatching to show each classroom that has, is compromised in a particular way, and it sort of reads as if it's, that your proposal is still compromised without any mitigation of any kind? So if there's a way to show that you've made, made a change that allows for proper light and air, and how you've done it, so if it's through the, you know, courtyard, then say it's, you know, intercourt satisfies X, Y, and Z, or I have a skylight that satisfies X, Y, and Z that mitigates the issue of a lotline window.
We'll, we'll.
So that it's just clear that, that you're handling that, and not, you know, sort of asking us to sort of buy into sort of an illegal situation?
Right.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. In terms of the stair extension, I can help clarify that a little bit. We first attempted, so currently, there's the existing stair tower. We, we also attempted to kind of maximize the, the space use, and also the proximity to the courtyard for those classrooms by creating a dedicated egress path through the classrooms, which is a pre-existing condition in the building, but that was not approved by our planning examiner. So this was an alternate to, to provide easy, fast egress to that rear stair, and also maximize the, the benefits of the space in the courtyard for those classrooms.
Okay. Okay, so, and we'll, okay.
Was, was there anything else that we needed to, or something?
One of the objections mentioned this multicolored glass facade.
That's from the community board, right?
No, it was actually one of the objections, and I was just wondering, is it, is it just the way it's rendered, or is it really a multicolored glass facade?
Multicolored.
We are anticipating multicolored glass.
It's a signature of the architect.
Okay.
Do you want to talk a little bit more about that, Andrew?
Well, sure. Okay.
Okay. And I'm not sure, I'll see, say, I'm just looking to see if there are other questions specifically for you. Yeah, actually, just if you could go through a little bit the program at the existing school. Just talk about what's, what's in that building.
So it's jam-packed with one, one class per grade, and then also, there's, there's art and woodshop in the basement, along with some storage. There's a very small kitchen, there's a very small science, Spanish room, it's about 185 square feet, I think. And then there's also a very small science room, which is, I think, like 200 and, 280 square feet, so. And then there's an elevator and some administrative spaces and meeting spaces. So when the school moves to the west side, they are doubling their, their classroom spaces, but not doubling the special spaces, the art, the music, those things are, they're going to, you know, continue to operate with one of those, those special spaces. And they will be, the science and Spanish rooms will be more of a typical classroom or science lab size.
So you're not increasing the number of rooms for that, but you are increasing the size of those rooms for the special spaces?
Correct. Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
And so, yes.
I'll be brief, right. Just, Andrew Bartle, just.
State your name again for the record.
B-A-R-T-L-E.
Thank you.
Andrew. Just two things. One, the uniqueness of the building is important to understand, the obsolescence, why it's obsolescent. It was originally built as a women's club, it was like most traditional New York City clubs, it was a low-ground floor, then three double-height stories. So basically, three floors with very small mezzanines. So what's happened over time with Manis is, they've taken the double-height spaces, and they've filled them in, so they're complete floors. But the way they filled them in that's created a lot of the problems, is that they made the little music rooms structurally independent, so, so, not, I mean, not structurally with the floor. The wall and the floor are tied together. So in order to make classrooms for children, normal classrooms, we basically not only removed the walls, but we removed the floors. If, so if you understand what's going to be there after we take the walls out, you have a clear understanding of why the courtyard would happen, because it's not like we're taking away stuff that's there, that stuff won't be there anyway. And so I think it's important to understand that kind of uniqueness and obsolescence of that particular building in that way. The second thing is, everything we've done with the courtyard and the way we've worked the rear stair is to, it's a beautiful building, and we want to save the facade. So if you look at the facade of the building, you'll see that, yes, there are big, big windows for the, for the auditorium space, but it's not, there's, in fact, one floor that has no windows at all. It was not designed as a classroom building, ever. Hence, or really, it was three double-height spaces, so. So our work, making the courtyard and putting the penthouse, have to do with effectively trying to keep the building, the best parts of the building, the way they are. So that's important to understand. The color on our little tiny little penthouse is, if you look at the building, it's bright red and bright green. It's a, it's a luminous red brick and a really brilliant green copper roof. Our multicolored piece up on the top is color applied to vinyl adhered to the windows. It has two functions. One is to create a distraction pattern, so the kids don't go through the glass wall and fall out onto the street, so they realize it's glass. And secondly, it's to mitigate the scale and work with the lines and orientations of the building. The building has a very complex facade, if you'll notice, the windows don't line up from floor to floor, and there's a certain graining that happens, and scale changes as the building goes up. And so our addition. And so our addition is working with the vertical lines, our structure are three-foot centers, but when we put the vinyl pattern, we establish one-foot vertical centers, which work with the last, with the copper, the way the copper's set up at fourteen and sixteen-inch centers on its seeming. So there's a rather elaborate relationship to the building scale that way. Also, we have a few solid panels in there that speak to the notion that when the windows go up the building, they go from being holes in a wall to being solid objects on the mansard, right? They go from being holes to things. So we played with that idea with those colored panels that are solid that relate to that concept.
And so in terms, just in terms of the flex space, just trying to understand the forty kid count, because when you look at the other classrooms-
The tables fold down from the wall.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're, they have benches attached to them.
Mm-hmm.
The kids sit, there's roughly twenty-two inches allotted per kid, we've done this in a number of schools. You can fit an amazing number of kids on those fold-out tables.
But isn't there some standard of minimum square feet per kid in a room? Does it, does it, I'm looking at the flex space, I guess that's on the third floor, maybe I'm not looking at the one that you're talking about.
No, no, that's the one.
Okay. Because it's, for instance, you only have twenty-six kids in a room that's five hundred twenty-two square feet.
Right, right.
And this is a four hundred four-square-foot-
Right, but the occupancy of the room during the lunch period is not really what the codes and the guidelines are set up for. Those kind of thirty-minute interval occupancies are typically granted to be allowed.
Anybody else with questions for the art?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay. Fred?
Oh.
No, I mean, is there something you wanted to add, or otherwise we'll move on to speakers?
Unless you want the director of the school to speak.
Oh, the director of the school, that's always nice.
If you have questions for her, yes.
Yeah. Do we have questions? I think, but most of our questions were answered unless you want to add something.
I thought there was a question about the mixed age group, so.
About the, I'm sorry?
Michelle Solheim, the director of Manhattan Country School. I believe there was a question about the mixed age groups.
Ah, okay. Oh, about the doubling, oh, yes, it was about the split classrooms. So, in the as-of-right scenario, the, the third grade and the seventh, the third grade and the seventh, eighth grades are split, right? So if, there could be a little more discussion about why that's a bad thing, because in the proposed, the kindergarten is split. So is that just sort of a necessary evil, because something has to give, or is it okay that kindergarten is split on different floors, whereas, that's a question.
Sorry, I think the architects should answer that question. It was a different question, I thought.
Okay.
So, in the, in the proposed scenario with those two kindergarten rooms, they've been very carefully designed so that, sorry, let me back up a little bit. They, with having two classes per grade, those two classes kind of work together, you know, they, they do things together, they, you know, communicate. In the proposed scenario with the kindergartens on the third and fourth floor, those two rooms have been designed so that there's a, a double-height space, there's an opening in the fourth floor classroom, so that you can sort of see into the classroom below, you can open a window and hear what's going on down there. So there's still a sense of community and connection between the two, even though they're on different floors. In the as-of-right scenario, we ended up needing to put two third-grade classrooms on different floors, but they didn't have the same luxury of space that the kindergarten classrooms did, so they were really more isolated from each other and wouldn't have the same kind of connection that they would if they were on the same floor. And with the seventh and eighth grade, so the, the seventh and eighth graders currently kind of are all mixed together, so they're, they're taking classes together, they're in the same classes. So I don't, I'll have to go back and review those plans, but in those situations, also because it's more subject-based, you know, if you have math on one floor but need to go up to the next floor for English, it's less of a, kind of a disconnect between the classes.
Mm-hmm. But, but that's actually, in your as-of-right, seventh and eighth are split, whereas they're not split in the proposed.
They're not split in the proposed.
Right, so it's, so, so then, maybe it's not as big of a problem in the as-of-right as the third grade that's a problem when they're split?
Right, it's really the third grade that stands out as being the problem. It's nice to have the, the seventh and ninth grade together, because they do sort of have ownership of, than those classrooms, and they work together, but it's, doesn't stand out as being as much of an issue.
Okay, great, great, thanks.
Actually, just to follow up on the as-of-right versus the proposed, in, in the as-of-right, in addition to losing significant space, we also lose four actual classrooms. So what will happen is one of two things. Either we eliminate the pre-K and the K, which puts us at a tremendous disadvantage, because people who like to go to school like to start at the earliest age and go forward, so if you're saying, well, we only offer from grade one on, you are already behind, you are behind. If we took the pre-K and K, then at some point in the matriculated years, we would have to go from two classrooms per grade down to one classroom per grade, so effectively you're saying, okay, you've gone pre-K through three, now go away, to, to half the students.
And currently, though, you don't have a seventh and eighth grade.
Yes, there is.
Oh, there is? Oh, there is?
Yes, it's, it's pre-K through eight, yes. One, that's the two hundred students, one per, one to eight is eight, and pre-K and K is two more, so that's two hundred. And also, I was, put it out forth in papers, but I would reiterate, this is a school that is, the part of the reason for its continuation and being in its essence, is that this is a school that offers seventy-six percent of its students financial aid, which is an exceedingly high number, much more than any other private school in the city of New York, and in doing so, also allows for racial diversity higher than any other private school in the city of New York, with fifty-four percent, when the average private school is thirty percent. So this is all part and parcel, the need to expand is the need to continue its programmatic needs, its social ethos, which was based on principles of Martin Luther King in nineteen sixty-six, and to financially succeed, otherwise it will not financially succeed. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Are there speakers on this?
Someone from the neighborhood?
Yeah, somebody from the public who would like to speak?
Sure, I'd love to speak with you.
Come up, please.
And you're limited to three minutes.
That's fine, I'll, I'll just take thirty seconds. My name is Susie Pearlman, and I'm a homeowner on Eighty-Fifth Street, right across from the building. And what this whole deal has done for the block is, we have met several times and have kind of unified together and discussed what's on the table here, and we're just, we're very concerned about what's being built on top of Manus. That's our big thing, we're concerned about the light. We bought our real estate with a certain amount of light that comes into our living rooms, and that might be impeded now. And we're concerned about, all of the brownstones on the block have, well, top-floor views of the top of Manus, and those who live on top or near the top are very concerned about a possible blockage of a beautiful view. And, and there are other concerns about traffic and things like this, but we are very familiar with schools on the block, we have schools, we love kids, we're filled with kids, and in, in many ways, we look forward to having another school on our block, but those are some major concerns of ours.
Thank you. Another speaker? Come, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, sure. One at a time, though, not like holding hands and like that.
It's a duet.
Or a Greek chorus.
Hi, I'm Paula Morrow, and I am representing the Eighty-Fifth, Eighty-Sixth Street Neighbor Alliance. We have multiple concerns with the, the expansion. Also, as far as the mission of the school, there are wonderful public schools that, on the block, that, you know, admit any student from the city. I don't think we necessarily need a private school to say that they do education better and can provide those spots with financial aid to give you a better education necessarily than we have right there with multiple private schools, but that's another issue. The color is something that Sue did not bring up, the color seems to be something the architect wants, because that's his brand. Those who live in the neighborhood really would not like your brand. We're, you know, getting a school, we're getting a lot of new incoming students, and it would be respectful to those who live across and see what's going to be up there, if there is going to be something up there, to kind of keep it as moderate and in conjunction with what's a pre-existing. And basically, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is William Morrow. I'm also with the Eighty-Fifth, Eighty-Sixth Neighbor Alliance. So, another concern with the rooftop extension was that, basically, it's being built, in essence, so that they can have a courtyard to provide light, at least from what we know. And this, it seems a bit hypocritical to me and also the organization that the school feels this need for light and, and space. However, they are effectively, in order to get their students light and space, they're sort of taking some of that away from the block and the community with this rooftop extension. I know that the association basically was interested in seeing if there could be windows on the east side of the building, which seemed like that was not a, I don't really know why, but that was not a possibility, maybe because of cost or something, but that was a major concern of ours, is basically that rooftop. And once again, the, the color scheme on the roof was a big concern, especially at the community board meetings, especially also because the students will effectively, inside of the classroom, I guess they will see the color, but it's really mostly the neighborhood that is going to be seeing that on a day-to-day basis. You wake up, look out your window, that's what you're seeing, and really, it's not only having the extension on the roof, but then going further and making it multicolored and very obvious and apparent, sort of adds to, I guess, a bit of the brazenness that we're seeing in their entrance to this community, which has really upset many members. So, we had a petition against this, which garnered over a hundred and forty signatures. And as well, we've reformed our block association in opposition to it, so that just sort of, and at the first community board meeting, we had over eighty to eighty-five people come out in support, in opposition of this and in support of our community organization. So that just gives a sort of framework of our community involvement. Thank you.
You've seen the drawings, right? You've seen a presentation of this?
Yes.
Have you met, has the school-
Yes, we met with the school.
You met with the school?
Yeah. And there has, I'm, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay.
Just to briefly respond to some of the questions or the issues that were raised by the three individuals, we have submitted extensive shadow studies on an hourly basis for the vernal and autumn equinoxes and the summer and winter solstice, and it shows that, given the setback in angle of our rooftop enlargement, that the light and air is minimally impacted in terms of shadows, a shifting shadow, and for the most part, there is limited. We regret that there is a blockage of views, but views are, you know, that's views. Traffic, we're going, we have given traffic studies that show that, basically, almost the entire student body walks to the school, uses transportation, and the school buses that we do use now, two mini-school buses, are from the west side, so we don't expect potentially from buses from the east side at this point in time. We never said that we provided a better education, we provide a different education, which is, I, I take no position as to whether it's better or worse than public education, I've had public education, you can make your determinations, whether it was good or bad. The color, that's, I, you know, don't know how to respond to that, that's an architectural issue.
Since, I guess the architect has done this other places, are there any photographs of other installations?
It's not really-
You can't-
Could you, can you not?
It's not-
Oh, okay.
It's not, we, we will revisit it, we will look, we'll provide some materials, and you can determine. And in terms of outreach, we have, we met with the council member, we met with the block association, we've gone, we went twice back and delayed this process more than a month and a half to come to, to meet with, to address the community board and the neighbors. So I think that we have done a fair amount of outreach, and have been, and we have provided them with copies of every submission we have made to the board as well, from the time that they became involved. So any revised materials that were presented to the board through Mr. Saul were provided directly to them by email as well. So they, they have been kept fully informed of all plans, all statements, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thanks. Okay. So, you have a pile of stuff to do.
Not so much.
Not so much? I have a lot of notes on my thing, that, I read that as a pile of stuff.
Well, it's a pile of stuff, but we're, we're very driven on our end in terms of removing, getting rid of problems. We believe that we can get your proper response within a week to two weeks, two weeks at the maximum, we can submit within two weeks, I would say.
Okay, so if you submit it in two weeks, I don't know if that's realistic, but-
It, we think it's-
So it's-
I think, the reason I, I say that is because a lot of the information that you've requested for clarification, we already have within our, I mean, we have full, not plans, but we have full details about existing programs, the clarification can be provided, we already have the specifications where all this information came from, so that's why it's not necessarily new material, it's just, material needs to be clarified and put in, et cetera.
Well, if you, so, if you submit it in two weeks, that puts us still on a June second calendar, because we don't have a hearing on the week of, the last week of May?
That would be fine.
Okay, so, so then if you could submit, I'm sorry.
Is that enough time for notification? Don't they have to re-notify?
Oh, but, that's-
Twenty days to notify. Yeah, thirty days, April- You'd notify tomorrow, you'd have plenty of time.
Yeah, yeah, that's, twenty-one days.
So, so May fourteenth submission for a hearing on June second.
Okay. I don't know, I'm going to request, if, given that this is a school and given the school year and such, if it is-
If the submission is fabulous and all the little parts are tied together into a neat bow, then we could review, and if we're happy with what we see, then it could be a closed grant.
If, if the board feels the grant, if, if the grant feels, yes, okay, that's all I can ask for.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Okay. This concludes the public hearing for April twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen.
We'll figure it out.
Yay, right.